Will you please silence your cell phones? And today's invocation will be given by Pastor Carl Vickery with Cavalry Tabernacle. And if you would please stand for our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Good morning.
In Jesus' name, God, we come to you today to give you all the praise and honor and glory. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for your favor. Lord, we ask you to continue to give us your direction and your wisdom as we lead this city and as we do our best down here, Lord, to help the kingdom of God, to help the families of southeast Texas and the Beaumont community. I pray that you would just bless each of these leaders. Bless this meeting today. Let your hand be mightily upon us according to your word in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton?
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel absent. Councilmember Durio absent. Councilmember Getz?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Present.
Councilmember Phil Shaw?
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters, deliberate the employment evaluation duties of a public officer or employee in accordance with section 551 dot zero seven four of the government code to wit specifically Tyrone E. Cooper, City Attorney. Thank you. First of all, thank each and every one of you for joining us on today. And we're gonna go right into the items of discussion. And the items of discussion, objective, enhance citizens' communication using multiple platforms. And one of the things that the citizens of Beaumont said was that they wanted to be more involved in the decisions and where the city and the direction of our city was headed. So that is part, a major part of our vision workshop today. And we're gonna go ahead and get started with that. Councilmember Turner will be writing on the board to my left and your right. So our first topic is gonna be building trust. And Councilmember Turner, I'm gonna go ahead and let you get started with that.
First and foremost, I wanna thank Mayor Muton for the opportunity to do this vision workshop as well as council for supporting it and the community for coming out. So we're gonna get right into it. One of the first things we're gonna get into is building trust. And one thing when it comes to building trust is enhancing citizens' communication on multiple platforms. So I kinda wanna discuss with the council, what are some ways that you guys feel as a council and as a city, we can do a better job as far as communicating with the citizens, getting the information out so that they can understand it? So if anybody has ideas, we kinda wanna jot 'em out, we kinda wanna shout 'em out, we're gonna jot 'em down, and we'll see as a council if that's something we wanna look into in unison, and we'll kinda move to the next topic. We'll spend ten, we'll spend ten minutes on this topic max, and we're gonna move to the next one. So building trust, if y'all have anything that you think we can do to enhance the communications, please inform me. We'll jot it down, then we'll move to the next topic. So we have actually ten minutes on this particular topic. It's nine oh four, nine fourteen, we'll move on.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Shaw?
I think the first thing we can do is establish what we're presently doing and what we're working on, so we'll know how to build from there. So perhaps the city manager could give us an idea of what we're working on at this time as far as staffing and the present vision that we have in regards to communicating with the public in a better manner. Kyle?
So I'd say two or three months ago, after listening to various council members, we have formed a new communications department. And Lauren Monets, who's on, I think, the fifth row, moved here from Denver approximately two-plus years ago? And was working in our convention business bureau. She's very talented, has all the skills we were looking for to form up this new department. I think she has a new staff member, I think, sitting next to her. We're in the process of hiring a third person.
He's back in the last chair.
All right. So, so we have three people in that department right now. And the goal was to better push information. There's so much misinformation on social media that our citizens are looking at every day, and we wanted an opportunity to push information from the city, to better educate the citizens on what we're working on. And they're just getting going, so it's an opportunity for the city of Beaumont to do much better. Again, is, the whole goal is to push good information, whether it's what we're doing with streets, drainage, you name it, any water and sewer projects on down. And we have a lot of room for improvement of pushing again what we're already doing. Could be parks and recreational programs across. We have twelve different departments with thirty-plus divisions. You know, this is a three-hundred-million-dollar operation with twelve-hundred-and-fifty employees on the payroll right now. So we do a lot of things every day that touch people's lives, and our goal was to try to better educate the public on what we're doing. And appreciate them being here today, and I appreciate the council's support on ramping up this new, new department.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other comments? Councilmember Getz?
Well, my comment was going to be to better utilize social media, and so the city managers just addressed that. The, I'll be watching the rollout of that because I think it is important that the city be able to deliver misinformation. I think it's also important, though, that we acknowledge that there is some citizens that believe some of the communication that comes out from the city. And I'm not commenting whether I believe this or not, but there is a perception by some citizens that information that comes from the city sometimes constitutes misinformation. So what we need to do is we need to be transparent as much as we can. There's some things we can't talk about because of various legal issues or various other reasons, but, you know, we need to strive to be transparent to the best extent that we can, and that would be something that we can always do to build trust.
Any other comment? Councilmember Samuel?
I appreciate the effort that this council is making in trying to better communicate with the community. I don't necessarily believe that you always have to do something new, but you should always strive to improve. And sometimes that means doing new things. The first thing, building trust, that is something that I prayed about this morning. And in order to be trust, have trust, you have to be able to communicate honestly and openly. And that doesn't necessarily mean there will be agreement, doesn't necessarily mean that we'll be on the same page. But it does mean when you have open and honest communications, at some point, you have to make a decision and move forward. Regardless of whether your, your belief or your interest is the method or means that's chosen, we still have to move forward and let some things be as they are. That goes for, I, I believe first we have to, as council members, have to understand the position in which we were elected for. We were elected to be legislators. We were elected, I'm, I've been an athlete all my life. I believe my position is that of one who sits in the press box, one in management, trying to move our team forward. And I say team because I believe in order for any entity to move forward, there has to be some amount of, of trust and correlation and honesty between them. So what am I saying? I'm saying as we move forward, building trust, it means we're gonna have to be honest and not play games with one another. Sometimes it's gonna be seeing things that's not popular, doing things that's not popular. But we have to understand that we are one member of a total body, not individuals. We are, we were not placed here to run the city. We were placed here to collectively make decisions that would be in the best interest of the entire city. So I'm, I just wanted to get that out as we begin this, this task. I don't think I know everything. I know there's so much I don't know. But I've been doing this for now over thirty years. I've seen true leaders. I've served with mayors that had vision and moved the council forward. I've served with Bill Neal and Maury Myers, and many of those guys I listened to, even though sometimes we didn't agree, I listened and I learned. There were council members on this council. I've been through several city managers. This past eight years have been the toughest time I've seen this city. But this morning in my scriptural reading, it said, "He allows us discord at times so we can grow." This city has gone through a terrible time. This country is going through a terrible time. But now is not the time to be divisive and fight one another. Now is the time to look for common goals and attempt to move with those common goals. But you can't do that if you're wondering if this person over here has really got your back or he's joining arms with you to work with you for a common goal. I don't, I understand what this new thing with the social media, but just as important as it can be, it can also be dangerous because much information out there is inaccurate and untruthful. If there is something that has come from the city of Beaumont that has been inaccurate and untruthful, it needs to be known. I've not heard anything that we put out that was inaccurate and untruthful. And if that is the case, it needs to be known, not insinuated, not saying this is being done. Identify, address it, and get it right. So I'm, initially I said I was gonna sit back and just listen, but I just can't do that. If I hear something that is not accurate or something that I disagree with, I'll try to peacefully bring it to the attention of council, and we deal with it. But I'm not one, there's a lot of information here. There's a lot of ground to cover. And a lot of the things, well, I'll just leave it at that. But truth is the basis of trust. And if we're gonna trust one another, if this city is gonna trust the council, then that's what we have to start with, is truth.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Excuse me, can I?
So I will turn the board to the audience where they can kinda see the main points that council just kinda discussed. We'll give it, get it back to the mayor, and I guess Michael speak, then we'll move forward to the next topic.
Can you turn the board so that, yeah, they could see it? One comment I would like to make in reference to enhancing citizens' communication is that social media and the internet and going on social media is fine, but we have citizens that don't use social media. So we know that three-one-one is one of our big communicators to the citizens in the city. So I would also like to see that announcements also are put on three-one-one because that is a big form of communication for our citizens, not only to report, but also I believe we need to be able to provide information to the citizens through three-one-one. Councilmember Getz?
Thank you, Mayor. Diversity, unity, they're opposites, okay? We are a diverse community. There's bumper stickers out there that says, "Celebrate diversity." We need to acknowledge our diversity. Diversity can make us stronger. But we're always, especially during election season, say, "We need to unify. We need to come together. We need to be one." Diversity, unity. We all need to acknowledge that all of us are up here for one thing, and that's to make Beaumont a better place. And I believe that every one of us up here are up here for that purpose. Now, we, as Councilmember Samuel alluded to, might have different ways that we wanna go by that. And there will be diverse opinions as to what, as to the way things should proceed. So we are elected to be legislators, but I'm elected to serve war two. Councilmember Samuel's elected to serve war three. There might be diverse opinions within that war. You know, we have to try to listen to what our constituents are saying and come to an opinion as to what their voice is. And then try to reconcile that with our own internal opinions and see if we think that is the best. And then our job is to advocate for that position that we think is best. That might meet with the consensus of the rest of city council. It might not. There have been instances where I have thought differently from the rest of city council, and a decision has come to, and then we've had to move forward. Does that mean I've changed my mind on that particular agenda item? No, but you have to move forward at the end of the day because you have to progress down the field. So diversity and unity, unification, they are different concepts, but they both can make us stronger. So I know we have limited time, and we've got a lot to do. Thank you.
So Mayor, prior to moving to the next topic, the three-one-one campaign, I think it'd be a good idea that we, our next joint meeting would be ASD. We can get with the schools and let the kids do a whole poster drive for three-one-one and kinda do a big advertisement of what all three-one, three-one-one entails, and how can we get the community engaged and involved as far as what all three-one-one entails and represents? So I think that would be a good topic called at the next BISD city council joint meeting to see if we could possibly do a three-one-one campaign combined with the students, where they put posters and they go home, talk to their parents about it, the whole nine. So just a suggestion.
Thank you.
So Mayor, that was the most for our objective one. If it's okay with you, can we move to objective two?
Okay, objective number two is to enhance financial and operational transparency and accountability. And city manager, that would fall primarily on city manager responsibility of the financial and operational accountability. So at this point, can you just speak to the duties and the responsibilities of the finances and the operational of the city?
Well, the requirements are all laid out in the city charter. This document is the annual budget with the capital program. The requirements and stipulations are again outlined in the charter. This is online. All of our financial documents are online, beaumonttexas.gov. If there's other ways that y'all think we could be more transparent, please let us know. Pretty much all of our documents, there's a comprehensive annual financial report, capital program, annual budget, all of that is available to the public and very accessible. So if there's anything else, again, we can do, let us know.
Any other comments?
I would like the manager, would you please explain to the public why the budget document is so important in this whole process? And if there are things that we as a council want to do or want to see the city do, how that process should go?
Okay, the annual budget, city charter is probably the most important document the city has. I mean, we all, of course, have to follow federal laws, state laws. These are the local laws of the, the city and the code of ordinances which the council adopts. And the code of ordinance is probably this thick. This document is required by the city charter. It's required that the city manager submit that by August the fifteenth of each year. And again, right now, it's a three-hundred-million-dollar operation. Everything is approved in this budget by the city council. It's adopted by the end of the fiscal year, which the start of the fiscal year is October the first. So this, besides the charter, is probably the second most important document the council needs to understand. And it's, again, it's approved by you. You can amend this document anytime you want to. But everything in there, the general fund, which is general operations of the city, police, fire, EMS, parks, libraries, it's in here. Then you have a water utilities fund, you have a solid waste fund, you have a lot of special revenue funds, and what we call internal service funds. So everything's outlined in here. All your revenue sources are outlined very clearly. All your expenditures are outlined very clearly. The personnel in every department, every division is in here, so you know how many people work in code enforcement, what are their titles, how many people work in the fire department, it's all listed out, approved by you. So I'd say the third most important document is probably the capital program. The capital program is a, I'd say it's a strategic plan. It just goes by a different name. It's required by the charter. It's a five-year document outlining what the city plans to do over that five-year period. However, it's approved by you on an annual basis. So you have an opportunity, I think where the mayor protem's going, you have an opportunity to amend the capital program on an annual basis. The council approves the street projects, they approve the drainage projects, they approve the general improvements such as a library or a park facility, and they approve the water and sewer projects. They're all outlined in this document, every single project with a description, trying to answer the who, what, when, where, why. And again, that's required by the charter. So the council normally borrows money roughly every two years for those street drainage, general improvement projects, and you borrow money over here, water revenue bonds for water and sewer projects. It's all in here. It's very transparent. You approve it at a public meeting in this room. So again, if there's ways to be more transparent, please let the staff know, and we'll try to do it. But this, this has been set up for decades and decades. It works very well. Councilman Samuel understands it well because he's, he's probably approved thirty-some-odd budgets or been a part of a council that does. But, and there's flexibility in here, too. I mean, the council could change your priorities today on something, and all we have to know is what are you trying to achieve and how are we gonna pay for it?
Okay.
Can you?
Can I? Go on, go on.
Well, can you please just state that no one, the process of no one council member can make any changes to that?
No, it takes four-plus council members to amend the budget. It takes four-plus council members to amend the capital program. And those need to be, those need to be public conversations in here, and we've experienced a lot of that over the last couple of years, where one or two council members wanna amend the budget, and that's fine. It just takes four of you to do it. And that's, that's not, that's, again, that's a requirement. It's not something we, you know, may do. It's, you shall do it that way. So the council, four-plus amend the budget or the capital program, and we've seen a lot of behind-the-scenes trying to, you know, amend certain things. And you can talk about it all day long, but you need to do it here, and four-plus have to vote on it.
Is it customary to amend the budget just throughout the year, or is that normally done at a certain time of the year?
It's normally done in August or September with, you know, the administration, which is the chief financial officer and the city manager, making that recommendation. I have not seen the council amend a budget in twenty-plus years. There's been a lot of effort to maybe talk about trying to do that over the last year, which, again, is fine. The council has the right to do it, but I have not seen a council amend the budget, and I don't think you have either in thirty years.
If it's amended, then for a project, it has to identify the four, or there has to be an identity where the funds would come from? Or where typically would funds come from for something that's not in the budget that's proposed for someone outside the budget?
You'd have to identify that revenue source so everyone knows what it is, or you, so you could, there's a number of ways to probably do it. You could decrease expenditure somewhere else and identify what they are. Or you could say, "Look, you have a lot of cash, you know, but use cash for whatever project you might identify." So if the council, for example, I'm just making up things, but if you said, "Hey, we wanna build a new park at this location for a million dollars," you have every right to do that. You just need to amend the capital program or tell us where you wanna, you know, place it in here. Our job is to probably give you those different options, and then the council would have to identify the revenue source to pay for it, and then we'd move forward and do it.
Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Getz?
Yes, Kyle. Thank you. That was kinda my answer to my question I was asking because, you know, in elections, normally we get elected around May, and sometimes budgets are already set around September. So, you know, if it's a new council member, they come on and it's a budget that's already set, so I was gonna actually explain the process if we want to get something added to the budget, but you just did, and I just want the community to understand that whole process.
But normally that's done prior to the budget year.
For example, if, if, if someone wanted to put something in, normally it wouldn't be placed in For example, if, if, if someone wanted to put something in, normally wouldn't be placed in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. It will be placed in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget if that council agreed to that. Is that correct?
That's, that's exactly right. There's a, there's a lot to it. There's, for example, the capital program has to be submitted by the city manager by May the fifteenth. And it's a proposed capital program. So the council, you know, has, you know, they have June, July, August, September to talk about the capital program because you don't adopt it until September. But the Charter requires that the city manager submit it by May the fifteenth. And again, the Charter requires that the budget be submitted by August the fifteenth. So you have some time to amend these plans or add things, take things out as a governing body. And then, again, you approve those plans in September. So, what I'm trying to say is these are set by the Charter, these requirements, that we don't pick and choose, you know, when we give them to you. We, we have to give them to you by certain dates. But it does allow for a number of months to amend them. And then, again, you have the, the right to amend them up until you approve them in here.
Thank you, Councilmember Gitts.
There's a real intricate dance going on up here. And I don't want to step on anybody's toes. I want today to be positive. But I've never been asked to be on Dancing with the Stars. You know, we're talking about capital plans, and let's just put it out there. We're talking, in some instances, about this AT&amp;T building, which I really didn't want to talk to about because I'm ready to move past that. I was the only one that didn't think that was a good idea. But the reality is, that was not in the capital plan for 2021, to acquire the AT&amp;T building. You can go back and look at the capital plan, it wasn't there. And yet, it was forced through, the acquisition of it, at a city-town hall meeting, and it was done. Now, as the manager said, the council can change priorities. And apparently, that's what was done. But to say that the capital plan's never been amended in twenty years like that, well, it was done as recently as this summer, okay? And the reason why that is so pertinent to me is because in February this past year, myself and another council member tried to amend the capital plan to have the creation of a dog park built at Rogers Park. And I was told at that time that there was a whole process, just like the manager just said, a whole process you got to follow. It's got to be in the capital plan, then you got to get funded. And I said, fine, fine, I'll do that. And it was put in the capital plan, one that was presented in, in May of 2021. But on the heels of that, we come back with this presentation in June of acquisition of AT&amp;T building. That wasn't in the capital plan. It had been in the capital plan before, but then it had been taken out. Now, that has been decided by the rest of council, that that is a way to go forward. And that's fine. We're going to go do that. It's going to be torn down. But when we talk about honesty and transparency and being candid with the citizens, let's do that, so that we understand exactly what's happened here. And the citizens know, because that has been a source of division in the community. Rightfully or wrongfully, if I'm a part of that, that's fine. I'm going to say what I, what my truth is. I'm going to say what that is, and that's what I saw happen. So, that's all I want to say about it. I'd love to move on past it.
I'm going to ask, I'm, I'm going to start with what Councilmember Samuel just, just stated. When something is stated, we need to get a clarification. So, Mr. City Manager, I'm going to let you speak on the comment that was just made so that it doesn't stay to the point that why it was done, when it was done. And no one mentioned AT&amp;T building, but since,
No, I mean.
Uh, since the AT&amp;T building was mentioned and that the capital plan was revised or it was put in there and it hadn't been done in twenty years. I'm going to let you speak to that.
I stated earlier, the city council can decide what they want to do, whenever they want to do it, based on four votes. The council, if you go back a couple of years, governing bodies change every two years, mayors change. The council as a whole in this room voted seven to zero to try to buy the AT&amp;T building at five-five-five Main. That's a fact. Go back and look at the history. A vote in this room, seven to zero. And then one council member went on the air about two hours later and bad-mouthed the project, misrepresented what happened. That's a fact. I think everyone would agree, except for one. So that's what happened. But we were unsuccessful in buying that property. There was a public auction, and we did not win, okay? So, we were capped out at two million dollars by the council. That's what they authorized me to go up to. We were not successful in buying that building. So time goes on about a year and a half, and the council, at that, at that time, different mayor, but it was six to one, six to one, wanted to move forward to acquire that site. Two council members in this room, Councilmember Neal, Councilmember Turner, I don't think anyone else could have done it, went and basically brokered a deal for the city to try to buy that building and property, three point seven acres. The council voted six to one to do that. So the governing body wanted to do it. One council member did not, which is fine. That's the way it works. So, council voted six to one to move forward to purchase that property. It was not in the capital program. That is true. It doesn't have to be. If the council, again, were to decide today, bad example, but go dig up the parking lot on the north side of the Civic Center. My job would be to go get it done, tell you what the cost is going to be, how we're going to pay for it. But our job was, my job and staff's job, go, go get it done. That's what we do. The governing body sets the policies, they adopt the ordinances, they set the direction of the city. So, no one in here brought up the AT&amp;T site. It's not even relevant to what we were talking about. But since it was brought up, that's, that's the facts. Go back and check the history. The council voted the first time seven to zero to do it, came back and voted six to one to do it. In this room, it was a public meeting, it was done properly. No, it was not in the capital program, it is now, but it didn't have to be. The council can, again, if they identify the funding, they can do whatever they want. It's better sometimes to do it in the capital program because everyone knows where it is. You know, there's projects for consideration, there's planned projects, and then there's projects under construction or design. So, that's the background. I'll be happy to, you brought it up, but I'll be happy to answer as much of it as you want.
I just want to say one last thing on it. And I hope this is the last thing on it. Yes, I initially voted for the city to acquire the AT&amp;T building based on representations that I now believe are misrepresentations as to what the cost of demolition was. At that initial meeting, an estimate was provided that it was going to cost five hundred thousand dollars to demolish that building. During that meeting, I received a phone call from a demolition company in Houston. And I had reached out to them before the meeting, but they had not been able to get back to me. I called them right after the meeting, returned the call. They told me that there is no way that that building was going to be able to be demolished for five hundred thousand dollars. It was going to probably be three times that. And now I believe it's going to be even more than that. But, based on that information that I received, I changed my mind within, as you said, two hours of the conclusion of that council meeting. And I publicly went on the air to announce that I had changed my mind and the reasons why. And that's it. That's all I have to say about it. Can we please move on and try to have a productive day?
Councilmember, Councilmember Gitts, you brought this subject up.
I, I, I did, I brought it, I, I brought it up, I brought it up because I can see the undercurrents of what we're talking about when we're talking about how the capital plan is created and the inconsistencies of this past year. And that's why I brought it up. But we have a big agenda today. We're trying to develop trust amongst council and move on, so I'm urging us to just please do that.
Well, I would like to say we plan to have a productive day, and we will get through this workshop. And one thing we're talking about is transparency. So the first thing that we want to do is make sure that we start with us, with the transparency. And again, you brought the, you brought it up. So if, if you bring it up, and you're entitled to bring it up and state your opinion, but on the other hand, the truth and the transparency of the other side of it also needs to be clarified.
I think the city manager acknowledged everything I was saying was true. I said it wasn't in the capital plan. The manager acknowledged it wasn't in the capital plan, and I used that as the example to counter the previous assertion that things need to be in the capital plan before they're done. That was an example, I guess, of where two council members, as the manager said, brokered a deal. And, you know, that, that was not something that was real transparent to the public. That was something that was just done, but I would still like to just move on down the agenda.
I'd like to respond to that.
Hold on, Mike.
This is for the public and everyone watching this. Look, under state law, if you were to go buy a house, you would not go on Facebook and say, I'm going to try to buy this house for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. You would, you know, you wouldn't want the whole world to know what you're offering and compete and so forth. So under state law, the city council can talk about buying possible properties, leases, economic development projects upstairs in what is called executive session, right? The council met an executive session upstairs, which is a private meeting. And in that meeting, this was discussed among the council. The council talked about and authorized council members Turner and Neal to approach the owner of that property. The council authorized it and knew about it and was all on board except for one, right? So they did everything properly. They did it within the law. Again, they went to talk to the owner like you would if you were trying to buy property out there without telling the whole world what you're trying to do and what, I mean, they didn't even know, have a price when they went over there. They were just talking. And it was eventually successful, and the council voted on it in here, six to one. So it was open, it was transparent. But please know that council members Turner and Neal did everything properly, as authorized by the city council.
And I didn't say that they did.
But you implied it.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying that that wasn't something that the public knew about. And you just said that the pub.
They knew about it because it was posted online.
Eventually, eventually, but.
Was there another way to do it?
I don't know that there was another way to do it. And I didn't say anybody did anything. No, I'm, if, I'm not going to imply something, I'm not going to imply something, Mr. Hayes. I'm going to say, I. You know, and here, here again is another problem that I'm having with you, and I'm glad that you announced your retirement because of this. You, you are sitting.
Okay, I'm, I'm. Mike, Mike, come on, Mike.
No, 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 because, no, no, here's, here's the problem. Here's, here's, here's the problem.
Okay, point of, one moment, point of order.
Here's the problem.
One moment, Councilmember Gitts, point of order, point of order. One moment. Okay, you've stated what you, you've had to say. Mike, no one interrupted you when you spoke.
You just did.
No.
You just did.
No, I call for point of, point of order. And I'm allowed to do that, okay?
Anyone is.
So, but I'm the mayor, and I'm going to call for point of order. And I'm not going to go back and forth with you, okay? So, you have brought this subject up, but then when everyone tells their side of what truly has happened, then you disagree. We're going to agree to disagree, Mike. And when they state their point, let them allow, allow them to state their point.
I have.
We're going to allow you to state your point.
You haven't.
No, that is not true, Mike. And I'm going to let you speak. So I'm going to go ahead and give you the floor at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. What I see happening here, as I have seen a lot in the last year to two years, is the manager trying to isolate me and saying, they know how you are, they know this, they know that. You know, that is inappropriate. It is inappropriate for the city manager to make those kind of comments about someone that is an elected representative of the body to try to turn the rest of the body against him. That's not appropriate. And I have seen that a lot. I feel like that I have been deliberately tried to be put on an island because I have had the temerity to express my opinion and to disagree with some of the positions of the administration. And that's fine. Again, I have the right to disagree. I have asked five times now to move on past this, and we are still talking about it. It's now nine forty-six. I had hoped that we could come in here and have a productive day. I would still like to see that happen. And I would love to move on because there are a lot of good things on this agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal.
Yeah, I think we're getting way off-topic on just about everything we talked about so far. But just to kind of go back to a couple of the other votes, or trying to get items on the capital plan or changing the budget or whatever we want to do. And I think one thing that we're missing the point on is it takes four council members to do anything. And you want to go back to a dog park? The bottom line is, you didn't have four votes. You want to talk about the AT&amp;T building stopping that? The bottom line is, you didn't have four votes.
We didn't vote on the dog park.
I know, because you didn't have four votes.
You never know unless you actually have a vote, Taylor. I mean, I mean, we didn't have a vote on it. You pulled your second, and we never had a vote on it, okay? So we don't, we don't know.
The point that I'm trying to make is, you got to have four votes to make anything happen.
I agree with that.
Councilmember Turner.
Mayor, I'd like to ask, can we move to the next topic?
Thank you. Objective number three is to create additional opportunities to receive community input and feedback. I think we've kind of talked about that with the new social media department. But if there's any other way that we can communicate with the public, of course, we can be reached by phone, we can be reached by email, we can be reached by social media. And I don't know too many other ways that, that we're missing. But if there's any other way of communicating, I mean, we would like to hear. Councilmember Turner.
Uh, Mr. Manager, at our, one of our upcoming meetings, is it possible that our, our new public relations department can kind of talk to us about their vision and some of the things they're going to be implementing? I think a lot of people are pretty excited about the whole department, and I think it'll be good in the future that we probably have it on a agenda to kind of get a report on what direction they're going to be going in and exactly what they'll be doing, and some of the different initiatives and different ideas they have.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to objective number four, to expand effective and equitable customer service. Our water department is one of our largest departments, customer service to our citizens. A lot of people come in and out of those doors. Some people still come in to pay their bill. And we want to make sure that we are providing the best customer service as possible. Our citizens are our customers. It is our duty to service the citizens of this city. And there are some. well, we, we get quite a few complaints through our water department. And, and they're handled. We have a great manager in that department. There are a lot, a lot of things that, that go on in that department behind the scenes with billing, such as a major problem we have, I know, is when someone is deceased, you cannot leave a bill in a deceased person's name. We know during the time that you're dealing with the death and planning of a funeral and things that go on, that that is not your concern to call the city of Beaumont to change the billing to someone else's name. But from time to time, that is a major concern in that department because people are not aware that within a certain amount of time, you need to get your water bill converted to another name. Usually, say for instance, it's in Mr. Brown's name. And then he dies. So Ms. Brown needs, need to get that billing into her name. There's been situations where the letter went out, but because you're so consumed with so many other things that it's overlooked, then the water is turned off, and then we get calls that, my water is turned off. And it's, it's, um, it's, it's something that has to be dealt with and don't really know what's the perfect situation to deal with it. But at some point, it does have to be dealt, dealt with in that department. Councilmember Turner.
Mayor, you kind of showed me a system that you kind of can walk in and you could pay on, you could pay at the station instead of actually going to a window?
Uh, there is a kiosk such as a ATM machine that is available. I think it would be, it would serve our citizens well. You would not even have to come in. The kiosk could benefit the city in so many ways. You could pay for traffic tickets, you could pay your water bill, any other fines that you have. The machine take cash, checks, debit credit cards. That way you would not even have to come into this building to even address a customer service rep. You come on a Saturday, you come on a Sunday, after hours. For those that don't use automatic draft or, or pay their bills through check or mail or just a last minute option. So it's something that we're looking into, especially, it would have been great if we had it during COVID, especially with people coming into the building. So that is something that I've presented, and it's something that we could look into.
Mayor.
Councilmember Gitts.
One of the concerns I've heard about customer service in the water department is what y'all have alluded to. And going beyond having a kiosk is the ability to take care of your issues online. I'm told by realtors that when they have a new family buying a house, moving into the area, that they can get their energy, electrical service done all online, the gas online. But that the water department requires them to actually come down here and make a physical contact so that, you know, if they're not in the area yet, but they want to be doing everything to move into the area, that it might require them to make a, I mean, if you're in Grand Rapids, Michigan or somewhere and you're trying to get all your utilities set up to your move in Beaumont, you know, it's, it's kind of hard if you can't get your water turned on till you actually get here. I, I don't understand why other utilities are able to afford that degree of customer service and, and we're not. Maybe there's something that, you know, we can do to help move that along in that direction. I, I don't know the technology.
Well, that's something that we could look into updating and making sure that we could do that. Councilmember Durya.
Yes, first apologize for my tardiness. But as someone said earlier, a lot of our elderly residents are not familiar with online and paying bills online. Now, I've had some of them ask, could they go pay their bills over the telephone? Call in, you know, be prompted, press this button, press this button, enter your card number. So I would hope that might be something we could look into. But like I said, a lot of them, they're just, not only are they not familiar with doing stuff online, they're not comfortable with it. And they say they would be more comfortable if they could do it by phone and they still would not have to come here to do it.
Councilmember Turner.
Uh, as far as like trash and services, is that option available online? If someone wants a new trash can, they kind of purchase it online or they have to physically go down?
So currently, the things that you can pay online that the city offers services in is municipal court, traffic citations, water bill, garbage bill, golf course green fees, beverages, et cetera. Do alarm permits, police permits, EMS payments, weed abatement payments, airport hangar, lease rentals. Do parks and recreation like softball field rentals, league registration, animal care donations and adoptions, building permits, all, building permits, and environmental health online permits. Some of these that, some of these we're working on will come early in 2022. And then library fines. But just to give you some more information, we're also looking at a company called First Billing. We haven't had the, basically the ability to take credit card payments over the phone. And it's, one of the things we're concerned about is PCI compliance. So we want to make sure that when we take somebody's credit card over the phone, that that credit card is safe. Our employees and, and the systems we use, we, we just want to err on the side of caution and not take those credit card payments over the phone. So we're working with a company called First Billing. We've been working with them for several months to transition over to them to where you can pay over the phone, you can talk to someone on the phone, you can actually make payments through texting. So it's going to give a lot more options to our citizens on how they can pay their bills.
Todd, can you explain a little more what PCI is?
So PCI basically stands for Payment Compliance Industry. And what it is, it's, it's basically safety standards for credit card payments online. And so different credit card companies have different standards. And so this company makes sure they're up with all those standards to make sure they're PCI compliant to where the customer is safe, their, their credit card is safe.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Uh, just one last thing, if it's okay with the council. I think Kyle, maybe since it seemed like it was a lot of interest on this topic, maybe we can get more in depth with this on the council agenda as maybe a discussion item.
Um, another thing is that, talking about customer service, a lot of customers and a lot of citizens go to social media to complain about their potholes or whatever problem that they're having with the city. More often than not, we will hear about it from social media, but in validating or trying to verify if we have a report on that particular situation, a lot of times we don't. So we would just ask if you would please call 311 to report whatever problem that you're having so that, and every time you call 311, those reports are recorded. They're recorded. They're also followed up on. And every department get a record of it to make sure that the problem is taken care of. So going to social media is not going to fix the, fix any problem. Now, if you continue to have the problem, and then a lot of people get frustrated, so you go to social media. But if you come to the city, come through the city, go through the chain of command, just making sure that if you're reporting something and it's not being taken care of, please go through the chain of command and come back to us because if we don't know about it, we can't fix it.
Can we put on the record the emails with 311? Because a lot of people get caught up in calling. I know you also let me know that the option is the email. Can we say the email for 311? What are the, like, how to email a problem to 311? You can do that as well, other than just call. Okay, great. I just want to make sure everybody understood that, too.
Okay, do we have any other comments or concerns? Okay. We're going to move to the next subject, which is the image and beautification of Beaumont. Uh, we've gotten a lot of response concerning maintaining and enhancing the medias, the intersections and the sides of our freeways. Um, also, just the beautification of our city, the entrances to our city, just highlighting when you get into Beaumont, the first thing you see. Uh, we know that it's a lot of construction with Tech Dot. It's a, and it will be construction coming in for, Kyle, would you say the next three to four years?
Five to seven.
Oh, wow. So that's going to be a little hard to beautify the entrance of Beaumont coming in westbound. But hopefully, we will be able to somehow get something done to beautify the entrance of our city. Councilmember Turner.
I understand from the freeway aspect with Tech Dot tearing it up, that's one thing. But I do think we can address our medians and our intersections because that's not actually a part of what's taking place on the side of the freeway. So, you know, I kind of want to discuss that with council to see how council feels because I truly understand, one of us can't get anything done by ourselves. I kind of want to see how other council members feel about our intersections, our medians. I, me personally, I feel like the image of our community really matters. When people ride through our community and you see good, clean landscaping and beautiful plants, it really matters. You know, I think it would actually help people to better understand and have a better understanding and want to actually live in a beautiful, clean community. And I think when you plant beautiful plants, it enhances the community with good signs and it stops people from littering. So I think it's less likely you'll see people throw trash out of the window when you have a beautiful bed at the stop sign or at the stop light. So I understand the Tech Dot aspect, but I kind of want to see how the council feels as a whole about medians and intersections.
Councilmember Phil Schell.
Councilmember Turner, I agree with you. And it's kind of the broken windows concept. You're less likely to vandalize a building that is being well maintained and you're less likely to throw trash on the ground on a median that is being well maintained. So yes, I agree with you and I would support any efforts to try to enhance our beautification efforts of the city, just from my perspective. Mayor.
Councilmember Phil Schell.
Kyle, just for the sake of our citizens who may not know, the Tech Dot project is a $500 million project that's running from Walden Road, Papadoz, down Cardinal to 124, the Fennett Road exit. It stops there if I understand correctly. It's that major intersection right there of Cardinal and, and I-10. It runs all the way down to Delaware Exit in front of One City Church and then down I-10 towards the bridge at Seventh right there. Basically, that's the, the bulk of that, correct? And it's going to be another four or five years or even longer, as you said. I was at a, part of a meeting this last week with local ministers and they were asking the question, we understand that, but what will that do to our, how will that impact our agreement with Tech Dot to maintain the overpasses during that time? That, is it a million a year we spend? And, and I'm assuming that it, it's going to impact that. And that's one reason why I've told the citizens, please be patient with us in regards to the interstate because there's no reason for us to go out there and spend a bunch of money on landscaping, only to have them tear it up. And so the response was, well, then what does that do to that $1 million a year budget? And then secondly, again, I agree with Councilman Turner that one of the things we have to do is change, of course, I, I campaigned on the whole thing of let's change the narrative of Beaumont. And people across the state give me four reasons why they are, four perceptions they have of Beaumont. And one of them is, you look like a tired old town, infrastructure. And so we have to have that curb appeal. And so we all agree to that. So I'm assuming that the answer to the intersections and so forth is simply just more money allocated, dedicated to that. If we, if we, if we put more money on that, then we can do the work. So two questions. Number one, what does it do to the budget on the highway? And number two, is it correct that we can fix this problem? We just got to spend more money.
I think we need to talk about what we, what we have done. Can we do better? Absolutely. It comes down to money and people. So Tech Dot was responsible for, all across the state of Texas, for mowing their properties, maintaining their properties. And through Beaumont, as we know, we have Interstate 10, Highway 69, you have 105, colleges are all owned by Tech Department Transportation, State of Texas. So the state, to save money, continued year to year, basically, to reduce the number of cuttings. They were hiring private contractors to mow and maintain those facilities. So maybe three, four years ago, we had a discussion in here and the council said, yes, let's, let's try to, let's take it over if Tech Dot will allow us. So we worked out an agreement where we, the city of Beaumont, took over the maintenance of I-10 and 69, not the roadway, I'm talking about the grassy areas and the landscaping throughout the city. And so we staffed up to do that. It's called the Highway Maintenance Division. It's in our Parks Department. And are there room, is there room for improvement? There is. At the same time, it looks so much better than it did three or four years ago. Uh, it's cut on a regular basis instead of three times a year. So we're going to continue to do that and try to do more. And then we have volunteers that, well, they volunteer, but they're paid time and a half, but they do volunteer to do it in our Streets Division. On Tuesday mornings and Thursday mornings, say at three in the morning, we have employees that go out and pick up debris on I-10 and 69 to improve the aesthetics. And so that's why 10 years ago, you'd see tires and couches out on the roadway that may sit there for a month. That does not happen any longer. If you see that, call 311, but they're picking those items up. Our employees are on I-10 and 69, for the most part, twice a week. We may zero in on a certain area of 69 one, one day of the week and come back and do something on 10, but they're out there working on Tuesday mornings and Thursday mornings. So, and then beyond that, council, a number of years ago, wanted to improve the aesthetics specifically outside of all the buildings we owned and within the central business district. So we have grounds maintenance division with nine employees in it that we did not have four or five years ago. And I think that's a new cost of $800,000. And so can we do more? Yes. Kenneth Riguez here that works with Keith Folsom. I think if you were to drive down Main Street, I think all of you would be proud of the way these, look at the, these buildings, the way they're maintained with the chairs and the tables and the landscaping and then the Julie Rogers Theater down to the Civic Center, go on down the street. I mean, Main Street, I think you'd be proud to have in any city in America. It looks good, it's well maintained because of them, they're out there every morning getting it done. getting it done. So we're trying to move that to all of our libraries, community centers, any building we may have within our 35 parks, to landscape around those buildings, they're charged to do that as well. So, it's looking much better year by year, I think Kenneth's been here about three years? Four? Three, alright. So, you know, we hired him from, he was in charge of a campus in Texas, a university campus, and Keith Folsom found him, recruited him back to Beaumont, and he's done really, really good things. So the key is having the right people, and then the council authorizing in this budget to pay for it, which we've done. But the council wants us to do more, which we can, it's gonna take probably more people and more money if you wanna landscape and be responsible for more areas. And some of you have mentioned, you know, certain landscaping at certain key intersections in the city, which we've identified the 10 or 15 busiest intersections in the city, a lot of them are owned by Tech Dot, the ones that we control. Tech Dot will allow us to plant if there's a grassy area, and some of these areas, it's concrete. So, we're, we're ramping that up, we, we, we've worked on it, we have a map, and we've sent that over to Kenneth and staff, that here's the busiest intersections, and they're working on just doing more, constant, never-ending improvement is what we call it.
And Kyle, one of the things we have to remember that, a lot of the properties we look at are privately owned. When you get into curb appeal, and I know some cities have a, an ordinance, and I know we don't wanna do that, but there are some cities that require businesses to spend so much money a year on landscaping, and I don't think Beaumont would, would want us to do that. But we, we, I, I think sometimes we, we forget that there are some properties that are just, that they're privately owned. We hope by the city doing what it can, it inspires others to do what they can. If you clean up your yard, you're hoping your neighbor will clean up his, is what we're hoping. But we're still, I, I, I think sometimes we forget there are limitations on the city and what we can or cannot do.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
And with that being said, I think it kinda seemed like we had at least four council members that do wanna kinda look into doing more with medians and intersections and beautification. So is it possible that we can kinda see at least the numbers, what would that take, the finances, and maybe a potential plan to do what the, some of the council members just said, that they want to see with the improvements on the landscaping and beautification?
Where it gets dicey is when one or two of you reach out and say, I mean, you have to be specific. What intersections are you talking about? And then, then you can come back and cost it out, because, meaning, staff's gonna, I mean, we're gonna make sure that those facilities that we own look good around the perimeter, and we're gonna make sure our 35 parks look really good, and continue to try to do better on I-10 and 69. But beyond that, you'd have to give us specifics of maybe where you wanna see something different, then we can cost it out, and if we add it to our existing list of the properties and locations we maintain, we'll be able to tell you, "Yeah, we can do that," but what's been happening is, one of you reach out and say, "You ought to do something here," another one says, "You ought to do something there," and our staff's like, "Well, we don't really know..." I mean, what are we, what direction are we supposed to go? So the council as a whole would help. That's, that's, that's something, quite frankly, it's been a challenge for staff, because we've never had council members trying to get down the day-to-day operations. You can, but you probably need to do it as a whole, so we know which direction to go.
And I appreciate, I think that's the beautification of this vision workshop, because we actually can discuss it, not, not necessarily get there, but see if there's some interest to move forward and possibly do a workshop identifying areas as a council that we'd like to see improved. So, you know, if possible, I would like to ask if I can get a second to see if we can explore a workshop in the future to, to kinda discuss the areas that we would like to kinda look into.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Gads, Councilmember Durya, then Councilmember Samuel.
There's a large portion of Ward Two that is known as Amelia. It was its own city at one time, it was consolidated into Beaumont back in the 40s, and it is sandwiched in between two major railroad tracks, different railroad companies. A citizen that's here in the audience today posted a video about how the railroads right-of-way is not maintained very well. It is, it's, it's just not maintained, and the city doesn't have the right, without agreement from the railroad, to go out there and cut the underbrush and the high grass and the things that are so ugly about these right-of-ways. What can we do, like we do with Tech Dot? We have reached out to Tech Dot, and we have reached an agreement with Tech Dot to be able to go onto their property and cut the grass. What can we do with the railroads to do something similar to that, if anything? Because these form major, well, like on Highway 9 here, it's, it's a major artery that's coming into Beaumont that you see, and then going along feeling, it's, it's the same thing, or along some of these other streets. What can we do about trying to work with the roads, railroads, Mr. Manager, to get in there and do something on their property, or encourage the railroads to do something on their property? That's one point I wanna make. The other point is with regard to our beautification efforts. In the past, and it's been a long time, but in the past, there have been times where the county would allow prisoners to come in and work on the roads, and I understand liability, working on roadways, about people potentially getting injured by vehicles, and is that something that we wanna get totally away from? Because now, there is a big impetus in the criminal justice system to have pre-trial diversion, and people are given the opportunity to not enter the criminal justice system by diversion programs, and part of that is, they have to agree to do public service in some way. I understand that there could be a cost to manage these people out there picking up litter or doing things like that, and I don't know if that's something that we would want to do or not, but is it something that we could consider exploring and see if that's being done in other communities, or if, you know, I'm not talking about the 1920s when we had a chain gang, that's not what I'm talking about, but we, we have the opportunity, perhaps, to allow citizens to fulfill terms of their diversion program by doing public service on the roads. So those are the two things that I'd like to have answered.
COVID changed a lot, as we all know, however, the city's worked with inmates, I think at the county jail that we oversee, they took, take down small structures for us, can't speak if they're doing that today. Again, it depends on, the COVID protocols changed that, but we've, we've been utilizing inmates to take down small structures for years and years and years. And we have police officers that oversee it, and there's a bus that transports the prisoners to certain sites, and again, it's overseen by the Beaumont Police Department. As it relates to the railroads, there's three railroads that own tracks through the city of Beaumont, Burlington, Northern Santa Fe, Union Pacific, KCS. Some are better than others, that maintain their properties. We're continually having to notify them of violations that are over a foot tall, when the grass is greater than a foot, it's a violation of our code of ordinances, and the city could approach them, but you're talking about miles and miles and miles of both sides of the track. And does the city of Beaumont, with the city of Beaumont, really wanna take on that responsibly? You could, but you're talking about a Herculean effort and a lot of staff and new equipment and so forth to, to do that.
Well, I understand that, but I would think that the first approach would be to get the railroads to try to maintain their own property instead of having it put on the shoulders of the city, and if it is gonna be put on the shoulders of the city, we should be compensated for that, just like Tech Dot compensates us for doing their roadways. So, I, I don't think the answer is to just give up and say that, you know, it's, it's too big of a task, because the citizens in Amelia and the people that go through there deserve to have their area of town look nice also. So, I, I would encourage us to at least open a line of communication with the railroad, if we don't have one, and if we do have one, to use that line of communication to encourage them to maintain their property to a certain standard, and if they don't, then to take it to the next level, whatever that level is. With regard to tearing down buildings, I understand that we use inmates for that. My question, though, was whether or not we could use them to pick up litter along our roadways, is that something that we could consider?
Yes. And Tech Dot's reimbursement to the city probably pays 20% of the cost to mow and maintain I-10 and 69. The city staff, and a number of them are in the room, work with the three railroads on a continual basis. We're in contact with them all the time as it relates to their crossings, when the grass gets too high, trying to find the right person within the railroad system, that changes quite a bit. Not a lot of employees work here in Beaumont, and that's something that they're working on every week and have for years and years and years, trying to keep up with everything they own within the city of Beaumont. Again, you know, 80 square miles of the city, those tracks are coming through east and west, north and south, throughout the entire city, and when the grass gets a certain point, yes, we notify them, and yes, we, we're talking to them and trying to get them to cut their grass, it, it's something that never ends.
Is there some ability that maybe a political gesture could be brought, or political pressure could be brought on the railroads? I mean, it's one thing for city staff to reach out to them, and maybe it goes in File 13, maybe it doesn't, but perhaps if political pressure was put on them, and I don't know how much a city councilman has political pressure, but, you know, you've, you've got congressmen and senators, and we all have relationships with people like that. Is, is there a possibility if we continue to be ignored by the railroads, that that would be a direction that we could pursue?
You could pursue that.
Thank you. Councilmember Durya?
First on railroads, they had the same problem, Long Avenue 8, and I've spoken with staff on more than one occasion, and their answer, when they speak to the railroad, the railroad's answer is, "We have tens of thousands of miles of railroad, and we'll get to it when we can." That's, that was their answer. And also, so, sometimes they do, I don't know if they're gonna do it or not, I don't know if political pressure will help, but as far as us contacting them, they just say they got too much to do.
It's really bad also at Washington and 11th.
Well, you know, tens, tens of thousands of miles of railroad is one thing, but they don't have that many miles inside the city limits of Beaumont.
I know, but what I'm saying is, they're covering it all over the country, so they're not really worried about what's inside the city of Beaumont, that's their answer.
And it doesn't make it right, but I mean, and we can keep going on and on and on about it, but as individuals and, and council members, I know that I've called, I've even called the railroad commissioner, because I have a railroad track that runs right on side of my house, and I've called for years, and I mean years, even before I even thought about council, and I've gotten the same response. And somehow, they think they're right below God, or maybe above God, but they totally ignore the calls, and it, it's gone on for years.
Mayor, what if we, as a council, uni- united, adopted a resolution and presented that to the railroads? I think that might have more of an impact.
And that is something that we can definitely look into, so that we could present it as the leaders from the city. I would be more than happy to sign off on that.
They're also under the impression that they're only responsible for like 10 feet on each side of the tracks. That was another answer I've gotten from them, so. Also, but I wanted to ask you something else on what Councilman Phil Scher said. We do actually have ordinance in the city requiring businesses to have certain landscaping in front of their businesses, don't we?
Yes, in certain zoning districts and part of new construction, you are required to have certain types of landscaping that the council approved in the code of ordinances, and our staff goes out and enforces that and does inspections on a regular basis, and if you see violations, just please let us know, because y'all are an extension of our staff. I mean, I think they do a great job. We also need the help of the public and the council to let us know, you know, where you may see potential violations, or where landscaping's not being properly taken care of, or it's maybe taken out, not replaced, those, those are things that we need to know. Let our staff know, or call 311.
But we don't have an ordinance requiring them to maintain it on a yearly basis, do we?
Well, if they're required to put in certain, certain landscape, in which they are, in certain districts and for certain uses, then they have to maintain that, meaning they can't just go put in certain types of trees, and six months later, dig them out and just have, you know, a dirt area within certain plantings, meaning they have to continue to have the plantings, whether they're trees, shrubbery.
Do we require certain, there's not a certain amount of money that we require for them to spend?
No.
Cause I know there are some cities, whether it's north, north of Dallas, and I don't know, Plano, whoever, Frisco, I don't know. I, but my understanding, there are some cities that require businesses to spend a certain amount of money every year to maintain their landscaping, so they keep a standard across the city. And I've, I've looked at that before, but I just never felt that we, as a city, were ready to go to that place.
No, the city attorney may expand on this conversation, goes back 20 years, when we had a committee that made recommendations to the council, and the council adopted in the code of ordinances, what landscaping requirements, it's all stipulated out, what you have to put in, it's based on the square footage and, and the use, and then we ensure that that's done, and they have to maintain that, but we don't, we don't, it's not based on a dollar amount.
Yeah, our landscaping ordinances have penalties in them if the property owners fail to live up to the regulations, and as a reminder, with specific use permits, they come before you frequently. If landscape is required and they fail to do it, or if they put it in and then it dies and they not reinstate it, then that specific use permit can be brought back to you and withdrawn, and they'll have to go back and make sure that they do what the ordinances require.
Mayor, we used to have a Beautify Beaumont Commission, and...
That's coming up next. It's coming up on the agenda. Don't mean to interrupt, but it, it's coming up. Okay. Uh, yes, we're gonna go to objective number two, which is quarterly ward cleanup for the year of 2022. I'm gonna combine the quarterly ward cleanup with the objective, number two objective, and also objective number five, which is to create a Clean City Campaign, and partnering with BISD, Lamar University, and other stakeholders to have a joint collaboration. But objective number two, it's gonna address every community in this city, and our second objective in our beautification and image consists of, create and enforce policies in reference to junk motor vehicles that are parked in yards. Leaving your trash can on the street, never bringing it in, dog cages that are not fenced in with a privacy fence, dogs that are not on leashes when outside of the owner's private property, storage houses, pods, pools, trampolines... Storage houses, pods, pools, trampolines and swings in front yards of residence. Eighteen-wheelers parked in driveways, boats, travel trailers being parked in a residential driveway and parking vehicles on city sidewalks and in front lawns. We get a lot of calls for all of those things that I just named. So in trying to clean up the city, beautifying not just one community, but every community across this city, cleaning up the city, also partnering with stakeholders and of course Lamar University and BISD. There is not a day that code enforcement does not get a call for one of these items. I get calls, I think every council member up here get a call about trashcans and junk motor vehicles, refrigerators, stoves, washer and dryers that are just put in lawns, put on front porches. Cars that are just, just sitting in the yards with grass that's growing under them that truly identify that it is a junk motor vehicle. So this is, this is huge. It's a lot to tackle. And I think the quarterly cleanup for twenty twenty-two and also a workshop probably will address most of this so that we can get some type of order, some type of change. Because when you're driving through whatever community and it's just a yard full of junk and it's been there and it just continues to accumulate because there's been, in some instances, no city ordinances to really comply with for the most part. You know, people will put it out and say, I'll get it to the street. And I would like to say that our city is one of the very few cities, not only in the state of Texas, but in the United States, that pick up heavy trash. Every garbage pickup. When we tell people that we pick up heavy trash every week, when we go to conferences, they think we're nuts. They think we're crazy. They cannot believe that we pick up heavy trash every week. Most cities do it monthly or quarterly, but the city of Beaumont does it every garbage day. And they do it faithfully and they do a great job at it. And then other cities charge to pick up your heavy trash. We do not charge additional to pick up your heavy trash. So I just thought that was something that really, really needed to be pointed out. But the only way we're gonna get Beaumont cleaned up is to get rid of some of these things. I have a hundred-year-old citizen in my neighborhood that walk every day. I need to join him. But he walked every afternoon. And we've had some dogs that have not been on a leash or have gotten out of the gate or whatever it is. But Councilmember Duryo just recently has had to deal with it. And they're not little bitty dogs either. They're big dogs. And so to be able to go out into your community and walk on a morning or afternoon and not be threatened with someone else's dog is very, very important. It's not to say that we do not like animals or we're against people that have animals, but it is the responsibility of each citizen to keep your dog in offense or to have your dog on a leash. We have a leash law. And you must keep your dog on a leash. Councilmember Neil.
Back to objective number two, we have ordinances for most of these items already in place.
Yes, we do.
I think the biggest problem is just the way these things are enforced and there's no, there's no teeth to any of it.
And there are no fines assessed to it.
There's fines, but I mean
But they're not being assessed.
And maybe they are, but it's not enough to get somebody's attention.
Right.
Let me, let me speak to that for the benefit of the public. So we have a code enforcement division. Right now, that budget is one point eight million dollars. There's ten employees, a couple clerical staff, but out of the ten employees, there's a manager who's here today and there's six code enforcement officers. I'm gonna read you something that you'll find interesting. This is for the month of October. There were one hundred and seventy-one cases on the municipal court docket in October, one hundred and seventy-one. Twelve defendants showed up out of one hundred and seventy-one. Zero fines were assessed. Okay, so make this available to you, available to anyone in the audience that wants it. Here's sixty-three pages of pending cases. Sixty-three. It's got the owner's name, signed the case number, of course, the location. And the council wanted more transparency, so I think a couple of months ago, we, we said, okay, because our staff works really hard every day out there. Said, let's, let's post this online every week. What did we write up? What was the violation? Was it junk motor vehicle, you know, litter, high grass? Let's post it online, so it's on our website. Everyone can see it. Could it be better? Absolutely. I mean, you're always looking for ways again to do everything better. I just don't want the public or the council to think that our staff is not out there, you know, working their tail off every day. They are. And again, I'll make this available to you. See everything citywide. There probably should be a work session and have the right people in here with the right departments and divisions that play a role in this process to talk about what do they do? Get information from them. They're out in the field every day tackling these issues. How can we do better? Where, where does it fall through? I mean, where, what's happening where people, you know, aren't correcting the violations, you know? And then what recourse, what powers does a city have? And at what time period? Right now, you give someone like, say, seven days or maybe seven or ten days to correct a violation. If they don't, then you file charges in municipal court. And then that could, that process might be over there for months and months and months and months. So, you know, that's again, probably like you brought up, maybe time for another time for a work session, but you could spend a couple of hours just on that.
If I might, Mayor, add to what the manager is saying, you know, COVID has impacted the court systems as well as everything else. And our municipal court is a Class C court, basically. And what that means is, is that the maximum fines that the judge can set is a five hundred dollar fine unless the violation involves an ordinance or a regulation that violates fire safety, zoning, or public health and sanitation. Then in that instance, the fine would be two thousand dollars. Our judge cannot arrest someone or have someone arrested for violation of an ordinance per se. So we're limited by fines.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Our objective two is, has a wide range of issues. Junk motor vehicles, we have an ordinance on that. Trashcans, there's something that says how long the trashcan is supposed to be out. Is that correct?
Those rolled back. It was repealed.
It was removed.
The ordinance, as I'm looking at it, says what time the trashcan needs to be out for collection. There's nothing in it that says what time it has to be taken back off the street.
Okay. Is there ordinance or something addressing the dog cages that's not fenced in?
I don't see that. I've not looked at that.
There is an ordinance on dogs being on lease when not inside the yards. I know that for storage houses, pods, pools in the front yard. There's ordinance, ordinances dealing with that. Is that correct?
Say again?
I don't think so. Is there?
Say what?
Storage houses, can a person place a storage house in the front yard?
We have ordinances in, in our historic district that deals with that, but I don't think that ordinance applies to the general, the city in general.
Can they put pods in the front yard and leave them?
Temporary.
Okay, and that's for a time period? Pools, can they put a pool in the front yard?
What kind of pool you talking about? A kiddie pool or?
Is that, is that what this was addressing on?
No, we're not talking about a kiddie pool. We're talking about a three, four, above-ground pool.
Yeah, the bigger pools. Not the kiddie pools, but like the bigger above-ground pools, about three, four feet.
There's no ordinance for that. Yet, we could.
Trampolines, I don't think there's an ordinance about that. There is ordinance prohibiting eighteen-wheelers, boats, travel trailers from being parked in residential streets, correct? As well as in driveways. So there, some of these, I, I, when I looked at this, I saw there being ordinances that address some of the, most of those issues. Those that didn't brought me to the fact that I know much of this is dealt with through code enforcement. And I'm glad you brought forth the information because if there are ordinances against this and we are seeing some of these things in the community, because it's very difficult to talk about beautifying a community when you're having issues with trash and litter in the community that's not being addressed. And so if that is being addressed, that, that brings me, brings to mind the many times we have issues with hoarders putting, having all type of stuff in the yard, in the garage, out on the front yard, backyard, and there's ordinance for that. But what I appreciate, what I just received is we've addressed that. And you came back, you say sixty-six page of people that have been, so that tells me the problem is not with code enforcement not citing people for it, but it's enforcement of that and what we can do in addressing the fact that it's not getting taken care of. Because that has a ripple effect in that, how can code enforcement, how do they feel continuing to going out, writing these citations? And then they're continuing to see the same thing out there and people are saying, well, why can't we get this done in our community and they're being cited? So what's the answer? That tells me we need to discuss how we will deal with the fact that we have sixty-six pages of violations that we can't seem to get remedied. And we need to find out what we need to have workshops saying specifically what we can do, what options do we have to addressing that problem in itself? Because it's difficult for me to talk about beautification on the corner when I got trash all down the highway or down that street, or people dumping trash bags in the middle of the street and there's no repercussions for it. So these are the type of things that we need to be specific about. So if, I'm sure most of the things that we're talking about this morning is gonna come to money. It's gonna be an impact on the budget. And when you talk about impacting on budget, you're talking about where you're gonna get the revenues to offset the expense. And when you talk about that, you talk about fines, fees, taxes. And that's something, nobody wants increased taxes. We all want increased services and we all want clean community. So I think this merits a specific workshop on how we will deal with enforcement of code violations in itself. And from that, we should be able to get some traction, some traction to have an impact on, and this is not just a ward one, two, three, or four issue. This is entire city issue because many times people come through, they don't know what ward it, some visitors from the holidays. They don't know what ward they're in, but they say Beaumont is the dirtiest place I've seen in, in years. And that depends on what street you're going down. I go down Helbert Grove and there are times that, and I, I, I give this as an example. I go down Helbert Grove. I see it's been high grass. All of a sudden, the grass is cut, but I see trash cut up all down the road. It doesn't take but a minute, we get it picked up. Benji gets his people out there, they get the staff out. But that's just one place. That's what's happening all over Beaumont. And so we, we have to figure out how we can deal with the issue of enforcing not just our code enforcement officers writing the citations. How can we go about making sure that those who are cited have to pay attention to what's going on? And I don't know how that's gonna be done, but that's something we need to talk about.
Thank you, Councilmember Samuel. Well, we'll get it done in a workshop, but by no means do we ever want to imply that code enforcement that they are not doing their job, because if they weren't, we would not have sixty-six pages of violations. So we know that they're doing the work, the violations are there, but we have to go into a workshop and make citizens accountable. Yeah, what, what's stopping the process from going through? Councilmember Getz. And then, excuse me, after Councilmember Getz, we're gonna take a five-minute restroom break and come back and we have, we have a visitor here that we need to get Bruce Barnett. I'm sorry, Ramlet. And he's with Battleship Texas. So when we come back, we're gonna skip around and go to the Battleship Texas so that he can leave and get back to Houston and then we'll pick back up. Thank you.
Councilmember Samuel, I agree with you. And I find it shocking. First of all, I agree, the problem's not code enforcement, but I do find it shocking. Out of one hundred and seventy-one cases, only twelve bothered to show up. And then out of that, no fines were issued. I remember once being in federal court as an attorney and a witness failed to show. And the judge sent the marshals out, adjourned the proceedings, told the council, you don't go far, but sent the marshals out to find the witness and bring him back to the courtroom. And it wasn't very pleasant for the witness that didn't show up. I don't know if our city magistrate has the ability to issue a bench warrant, to go out there and have citizens, it's just a five hundred dollar misdemeanors maximum fine. I don't know. But if, if he does, I would encourage him to use that power because that is disrespect of the court to just not show up. It's, it doesn't take long for a few people to just bother to ignore their summons that, and not have any repercussions to that, for that word to get disseminated out in the community. And like wildfire, you'll have nobody showing up. And we may be at that point. That's not acceptable. It's not acceptable. We have got to do something to make an impression upon people that when you are on a court docket, you've got to show up or there's gonna be repercussions. We just have to do something about that.
If I might, Mayor, our municipal court is not a federal court. As I indicated, it's a Class C court. And if a defendant fails to appear, the judge does have the authority to issue a fail to appear on that person, which is basically a warrant. And, you know, I would urge the council to invite the municipal judge to come in and address these And, uh, you know, I I would urge the council to invite the municipal judge to come in and address these issues. We only hear it on the one side. We don't know what's happening, there may be compliance, there may be other things that might, uh, explain what's the statistics that have been bandied about here this morning. So I would suggest you talk to Judge Lightly.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, take a five-minute break and get back and resume. Thank you.